Welcome everyone to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is now called to order. Councilwoman Patel, please lead us in the flag salute.
Which leads you to the flag of the United States of America. And to their book, which is standing, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Mrs. Kraus, can you please call the read statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight, and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Copy of the notice is mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the also the township clerk on said date. A link in a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
That's it.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Hablets.
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Present.
Council President Scobah.
Present. We'll take the motions one at a time, unfortunately, but we'll have to do it this way. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. So moved by Councilmember Vanchery.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hablets. Please call the roll for the minutes of the meeting of December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Have a motion to approve the meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Murphy, second by Councilmember Hablets, please call the roll for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes, have a motion to approve the January third, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. So moved by Councilmember Vanchery, second by Councilwoman Patel. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Mayor Damiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, before I do my state of the township, we have a presentation of MAT Awards, which is the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Awards, to two Little Falls Police Department officers who are joining us here this evening. And before I turn it over to the chief for a brief presentation of these awards, I would just like to say that drunk driving is one of my pet peeves. And I know that the Little Falls Police Department has been very proactive in their stops and arrests of drunk drivers. And it's one of my pet peeves, especially in two thousand and twenty-two and now going into two thousand and twenty-three, because of the ability to so easily call an Uber or a Lyft right from your phone. If you've had one too many to drink, get on your phone and for just a couple of dollars, get home safely. It's so easy to do. It's not worth risking your life or someone else's getting in your car and driving home drunk. And I commend our Little Falls Police Department and all of our officers, and especially to the two recipients this evening of MAT Awards, for doing what they do in proactively stopping drunk drivers, not only to get them off the roads and keeping them safe and making sure that they get home safe, but for making sure that every other driver on the road gets home safe that evening. So I'm going to turn it over to the chief this evening for a brief presentation of some MAT Awards to two very well-deserving Little Falls Police Officers.
Thank you. Good evening. Since I've become the chief of police, I thought it was super important to recognize the good work that our officers do, not only with the MAT Awards, but just on a day-to-day basis. Oftentimes, we'll hear when something goes wrong. We see it all over social media. It's on the news. But it's really this type of work that happens every day without the recognition that I thought it deserved. So in speaking to the mayor and the council president, we thought, when our officers are out there and doing what they're supposed to be doing, they receive these types of recognitions and awards to do it in front of the township in this forum. So I'll give you a couple of statistics on drunk driving. In two thousand and seventeen, ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-four people died in drunk driving crashes. That's one every forty-eight minutes. More than three hundred thousand people were injured in drunk driving crashes. Every day, nine hundred and twenty-six are injured, and every ninety seconds, someone is injured in a drunk driving crash. There were three point seven eight million attempts to drive drunk. That's with a blood alcohol concentration of point zero eight or above that were prevented by ignition interlocks. And in two thousand and nineteen, drunk driving deaths represented twenty-eight percent of all traffic fatalities. So that's over thirty-six thousand lives that were impacted by the death. Well, obviously, the fatalities were impacted, but think of the family members, the mothers, the daughters, the wives, the husbands that were affected by that. And I'd just like to add this, that this MAT Award, we do get it departmentally every year. So I'm hoping to introduce the officers in this format for next year also. So without further ado, I'd like to call up who happen to be both detectives, Detective Kenya and Detective Fleck.
Mayor, the floor is yours.
All right. And with that, we have this year's two thousand and twenty-three State of the Township. And with two thousand and twenty-two coming to a close, without the daily changes in rules surrounding the COVID-nineteen pandemic, it's nice to be getting back to the old normal. Before I begin, I would be remiss if I did not mention that everything that happens in town would not be possible if it were not for the incredible support that I received day in and day out from all of the council members, and this past year was no exception. I would like to congratulate Council President Anthony Scobah on his reelection as council president. I would also like to congratulate councilmembers Vanchery, Murphy, and Patel on their election this past November. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the employees of the township who work so hard each and every day to keep this town up and running, especially our business administrator Chuck Cuccia, our township clerk Cynthia Kraus, and our deputy clerk Melissa DePiero. I am thrilled to announce that the first three sections of our Main Street Streetscape project, which have been delayed for years due to supply chain issues and COVID-related delays, is finally underway. Soon, our downtown will not be stuck in nineteen sixty. And like so many of our surrounding neighbors, we will have a modern, cleaned-up downtown that we can all be proud of, that will be decorated with lights and wreaths and banners, and funded by grants received in prior years. All of the construction that you see ongoing along Main Street is currently to improve the downtown aesthetics and bring Little Falls into the millennium. Eventually, it's my vision that the streetscape will span from the border of Little Falls in North Caldwell in Singac to the very top of Long Hill Road, as well as along Stevens Ave and eventually Patterson Ave. It will add a welcoming and soft feel to the township. Little Falls had a great two thousand and twenty-two from a grants perspective, and the township was awarded funding of nearly one point seven five million dollars, and comes from a combination of state and county sources. We received nearly a half million dollars to improve Wilmore Park. We received over four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to continue the streetscape on Stevens Ave from Main Street to Walnut Street. We received three hundred thousand dollars to expand the streetscape on Main Street from Maple Ave to Van S Ave. And we received two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to add a sidewalk along Wilmore Road to allow students to safely walk to school from Francisco Ave. We also received a hundred thousand dollars to add Belgium Block curbs and repave Mozart and Cherry Street, as well as nearly a hundred thousand dollars for police overtime for things such as highway enforcement, drunk driving enforcement, and seatbelt enforcement, as well as twenty-six thousand dollars towards firefighter turnout gear. All of these improvements and expenses come to Little Falls residents at no cost funded by grants, which have increased by hundreds of thousands of dollars since I've become mayor over prior administrations. Little Falls continued to have incredible attendance at its summer concerts in the park with the assistance of ABC. We continued to host outdoor movie nights and the ever-popular farmer's market, which nearly doubled its visitors this year to almost fifteen thousand visitors throughout its twenty-four weeks. And this year, the township hosted its second annual water day, which wasn't cut short by rain and was an incredible success. The township continued to host its annual five K, townwide garage sale, light up Little Falls, and its numerous flag-raising ceremonies to honor and remind us of the struggles and successes of others. I need to thank councilmember Hablets for her dedication to making Little Falls such a great place to live, as well as former councilmembers Seber and Kwadi for their assistance in making these events so successful with so many events offered to people of all ages. I also need to thank our Little Falls Cert team more than ever for their services this year as they assisted at all of our major events throughout town to ensure all remain safe. This past year, the township made a substantial upgrade to the nine-one-one communication system, which cost nearly one million dollars. We continued to make substantial sewer repairs and upgrades to our aging sewer system in town, some of which is over one hundred years old. We also completed the pedestrian walkway at Town Hall, which was part of the original plan, but eliminated during its original construction. We purchased a roll-off truck to ensure that in the event there was ever a flood again, that we are never dependent upon garbage contractors to assist in removing and relocating dumpsters when our residents are in dire need of dumpsters being relocated. We also brought a tax map into the twenty-first century and have now digitized the tax map. And we passed a lead-based paint abatement ordinance to ensure that residents, particularly tenants, remain safe. And finally, after over a decade, the building remaining, I'm sorry, and finally, after over a decade of the building remaining empty, and this administration vowing to work to save the building, we partnered with the Historic Society and Ethan and the Bean to repurpose the old municipal building at thirty-five Stevens Ave to have it restored to its old beauty at no cost to the residents of Little Falls. For the Recreation Department this past year, the Fall and Spring Sports were able to utilize the renovated sports and recreation complex, and the township's annual summer camp program was back in full swing, thanks to our Recreation Department headed by Mr. Pacero and Mr. Pace. This past year, pickleball saw its highest registration numbers with one hundred and thirty-nine individuals registered and seemingly that many people there each day. Our spring sports season saw an all-time high registration of eight hundred and eighty-nine children registered, as well with more and more children being drawn to the renovated facility than ever before, with a total of two thousand four hundred and fifty-six youth and adult sport registrations in Community Pass in two thousand and twenty-two. This year, the Little Falls Recreation Department successfully added two events, one of which was delayed a few years due to weather and COVID, with the addition of the Food Truck Festival for Halloween, as well as the addition of the Peddler's Village Holiday Marketplace. There are now thirty-eight total different sports programs and events hosted by the Township Recreation Department each year available to Little Falls residents. For the Building Department and Fire Official in two thousand and twenty-two, under the leadership of James D. Maria, the Building Department and Township have continued to work towards revitalizing, upgrading, and enhancing our township in a positive direction, which is simultaneously helping to ensure the financial future of the town. Many homeowners have also invested in their homes, continuing to choose Little Falls as their home and continuing to make improvements to their homes. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were seven hundred and sixty-four permits issued and costing over six hundred thousand dollars in total permit fees. There were seventy new buildings constructed with new construction totaling over thirty-seven million dollars. There were seven hundred and fifty-nine inspections completed and two hundred and thirty violations issued. These new buildings and developments will increase the tax base and ratables for the municipality and greatly assist in continuing to stabilize the taxes in Little Falls, while assisting in paying down the excessive debt that Little Falls has had since prior to me taking office. Under his department in fire prevention, Mr. D. Maria has performed a total of seven hundred and forty-two inspections in two thousand and twenty-two and performed a total of nine fire investigations. Through these inspections, he has issued two hundred and fifty-eight violations for issues that he has noted. The building and fire prevention departments have been busy in two thousand and twenty-two. As far as developments in traffic, the new development, which is underway, have proven to have little impact on our schools and little impact on the traffic in Little Falls, which was a concern of many residents here in town prior to them being developed. In fact, only a couple of children have been added to our schools from all of the developments, including those approved even prior to me being elected as mayor. As far as traffic, traffic has noticeably decreased over the past several months, now that drivers are becoming more accustomed to the new traffic pattern at the Route Forty-six and Three Split. Once the project is completed and additional lanes are added at the split, and the highway becomes even safer and accidents hopefully decrease substantially, traffic along Main Street will be almost entirely alleviated. Since changing the timing of the traffic lights on Main Street, traffic even during rush hours minimal and flows with little wait time at all of the traffic lights along Main Street. For the Peckman River, as residents are aware, last year, the federal government announced funding for the Peckman River Project, which the federal government has announced funding to the tune of over one hundred and forty-six million dollars. I've just learned that the design study is about to begin and soon will be underway. While this project will take some time to be completed, it will ultimately add relief that many Little Falls residents need to help them sleep better at night, knowing that their homes are not one rainstorm away from flooding. The library continues to add countless community events each year for our residents and hosts so many events for our children and adults. With respect to our police department, this past year, the Little Falls Police Department, led by newly sworn-in chief Brian Proll, continues to maintain its accreditation as a department due to the policies and procedures that have been instituted to ensure the safety of our department and our residents. I want to wish Chief Proll safety and success in his leadership of this department as he leads them in his new rank as chief. This past year, under his leadership, the Little Falls Police Department has responded to twenty-six thousand ninety-nine calls for service, averaging over seventy-one calls per day. There were nine hundred and ninety-four motor vehicle crashes, four thousand two hundred and seventy-three traffic enforcements, and over one hundred thousand miles patrolled, all within a town that's less than three square miles. As we progress into two thousand and twenty-three, the Little Falls Police Department will be launching an online traffic complaint form where residents can log a complaint and officers can follow up with that and information to provide best solutions to issues that may exist on their particular streets or areas of concern. Stay tuned for more information. We're going to be transitioning to a new program to disseminate information to residents for both emergency and non-emergency purposes. During two thousand and twenty-three, Chief Proll intends to reinstitute the Special Police Officer Program. These officers, once trained and in place, will allow us the flexibility to bolster the department's capabilities with community policing, traffic enforcement, and patrol-related duties. They will also serve as a force multiplier during states of emergency or when additional manpower is necessary. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of the members of the Little Falls Police Department for their service, as well as their families who work holidays, emergencies, and all hours of the day and night. The council and I continue to keep the safety of the residents in the forefront of our minds, and after having an opportunity to monitor the success of the speedhumps that were added on Jacobus Ave and Van Pelt, additional streets through Little Falls may be added in the upcoming year after additional meetings with residents. I'd like to thank Councilman Vanchery for his continued dedication to the transportation-related issues in this municipality. This year, Councilman Vanchery was instrumental in having the first "Don't Block the Box" added to the intersection of Montclair Ave with additional intersections along Main Street to be added in the upcoming warmer weather. This year, I'm hopeful that the installation of the traffic light at the intersection of Francisco Ave at Cedar Grove Road and Wilmore Roads will be completed, adding an additional level of safety for everyone that uses that intersection on a daily basis. For EMS, in furtherance to the township's dedication to safety, this year, due to the Little Falls EMS program having moved to a full-time program under the guidance of EMS Coordinator Mike Banderski, the Little Falls EMS program has run smoothly and more efficiently and has provided an incredible service to Little Falls residents, which to date, no resident has been issued a bill for services by the EMTs or for the ambulance. In two thousand and twenty-two, Little Falls EMS was called for a total of one thousand six hundred and forty-seven calls. Little Falls staffed at least one ambulance twenty-four-seven and a second ambulance when possible. Little Falls EMS answered one thousand two hundred and sixty-six calls within the township and responded to medical calls in Wayne ninety-four times, total of sixty-five times, Woodland Park fifty-nine times, Clifton fifty-seven times, and several other towns totaling an additional thirty-seven times. Thank you to all of our EMTs who work each day, responding to some of the least expected calls anyone can imagine. In two thousand and twenty-three, the construction of the new EMS building on Wilmore Road should be underway as soon as funding is approved by the council and plans are completed. For the Fire Department in two thousand and twenty-two, the Little Falls Fire Department, led by Chief Ken Sitche, responded to a dorm fire at MSU, a structure fire at Tony's Pizza, a structure fire on Loretta Drive, a motor vehicle entrapment on Cedar Grove Road and Newark Compton Turnpike, and multiple mutual aid calls to Cedar Grove, Passaic, and Prospect Park to fight structure fires. There were a total of five hundred and eighty-four alarms, with forty-three of them being at Montclair State University. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Water Main Project along Main Street from Union Ave to Route Twenty-three was completed, increasing water pressure for residents in the Fire Department if ever needed. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Little Falls Fire Department is looking to secure funding to migrate the Fire Department onto the state radio system, including new portable and mobile radios. The department is also looking to secure funding for the replacement of Engine Four, as well as a mini pumper or squad vehicle for Singac Company Three. Thankfully, the residents of this township can sleep with the peace of mind that the Little Falls Fire Department is ready to jump into action any time of the day, no matter the weather. I want to thank each and every member of the Little Falls Fire Department for their dedication to the residents of this township. For the DPW in two thousand and twenty-two, under the guidance of DPW Superintendent Ron Campbell, the Little Falls DPW continued to keep up with its traditions of making sure that Little Falls roadways were plowed within seconds of snow hitting them following every snowstorm. This small crew is responsible for maintaining all of our parks and fields throughout the town, as well as maintaining a hundred and forty various lots that were affected by FEMA buyouts. The DPW planted dozens of trees this year on various vacant lots and in our parks and built a rain garden on the Old Mars Canal Lane. The DPW continued to restripe all of the crosswalks and stop bars as needed throughout town and restriped all of the parking spaces along the rec center to maximize parking for visitors. The DPW painted epoxy floors in the cells and garage at the police station, as well as hung new TVs to assist the police in upgrading the township surveillance system. This year, the township also received a new F-Three-Fifty with a plow, as well as two state-of-the-art Ventrac snow plow and snow blower machines, which frankly, if we don't get to use this year, I'd be happy. Being a grown-up has dramatically changed the way I feel about snow. Over the past six years, I've truly enjoyed serving as mayor. When I ran for mayor, the number-one concern of the residents was the ever-increasing taxes. And I vowed to find a way to stabilize taxes. I found a solution to do so, and anyone who does budgeting knows that there's two parts to any budget: income and expenses. I'm happy to say that there is very little money that can be removed from the budget with respect to spending. So the only way to offset the ever-growing costs is to increase the income, and adding ratables is the only way municipalities can do so. Many have criticized the development that is occurring in town. Yet on the other hand, if nothing was done to offset the growing expenses, your taxes would increase, and the number-one concern of nearly every resident that I have ever spoken to would not have been addressed. This is where I ask all of you to look at what is most important to you and decide what is right for Little Falls. It is more important to be able to afford your, is it more important for you to be able to afford your basic needs and necessities and have developments that beautify industrial zones in Little Falls? Or is it more important to allow industrial zones along Main Street to sit stagnant in the name of quaintness while simultaneously not being able to afford to live here anymore because you can't choose both? The answer that you would prefer a balance between the two simply does not exist because developers have a minimum density that they require in order for the project to be feasible. As an aside, I agree with nearly everyone that has said that the new developments are tall, that they're close to the street, that they're dense, that they are plain. However, the fears that schools will be overcrowded, traffic will increase, and additional services will be needed have simply proven to be incorrect. A balance had to be met that brought in a benefit to the township that keeps Little Falls affordable while not costing additional services. And as many economists suspected, the market was only going to warrant redevelopment for a short period of time, and that bubble has now burst. We had to strike while the iron was hot. I now suspect that there will be a period of time when major development will cease for a long period. And thankfully, Little Falls will have the advantage of these new ratables to assist us in stabilizing our local taxes. So in the face of adversity, so much has been accomplished here in Little Falls in two thousand and twenty-two. As I've stated from the onset, I remain dedicated to my promise of transparency. I wish people would attend council meetings and address me in this council with questions, rather than spreading misinformation on social media, which goes largely unanswered. The future of this township is truly bright, and all of our pockets will truly see a tremendous benefit. I've truly enjoyed each day that I have been fortunate enough to serve as your mayor. As always, if you have any issues, no matter big or small, no matter day or night, I invite you to contact me by any means. I am always happy to have a discussion about anything and prefer to do so without people using social media as their first effort to have an issue addressed. I look forward to continuing to serve as your mayor, and I wish everyone health and happiness in two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, does council members have any comments or questions regarding the state of the township? CNN, does the council have any questions or comments regarding Chief Pearl's presentation? We'll move on to council reports. Councilwoman Patel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. So I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Beagle, Mr. Intelli, and Ms. Hawani, all of whom are from the Clifton Board of Health. They provided me with an overview of the services that they provide to Little Falls, such as training officers and EMTs on proper procedures and protocols for communicable diseases, responding to environmental complaints, conducting food inspections, and providing health education to the residents here. One of my goals is to provide more transparency to the residents so they are more informed as to what is occurring, while simultaneously encouraging them to participate in the numerous events that the Clifton Board of Health has. I do believe that one of the responsibilities of this committee is to provide all the pertinent information so that every resident can be educated on decisions about their health and well-being. I want to make it clear that all of Little Falls residents are more than able to participate, not only in the programs that are going to be available in Little Falls, but those in Clifton as well. So for example, there will be Moderna COVID-nineteen bivalent booster shots available tomorrow, the twenty-fourth, and February seventh, from nine AM to eleven AM at Clifton City Hall, which is located at nine hundred Clifton Ave in Clifton. They have other upcoming dates, and I will keep you informed of those as well. The Clifton Health Department will also be at the Little Falls Library on Thursday, February twenty-third, from five PM to seven PM, to answer any health-related questions and share additional information. There are going to be some free giveaways, so make sure to stop by. I was provided the report for the fourth quarter for two thousand and twenty-two, so this is just a quick rundown. There were a total of two hundred and sixteen confirmed improbable cases of COVID in Little Falls. Out of those, seventy-one were properly investigated per CDC guidelines, which provide thorough investigations for those under eighteen years old and those over sixty-five years old. There was a flu clinic in Little Falls on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. And there were also approximately thirty-seven incidents in Little Falls where animal control was dispatched and fifty food establishments that were inspected in the fourth quarter. We're also in the process of getting a survey up on the town website, so I can hear from the residents and get a better understanding as to what you are seeking in terms of programs, information. I will let everyone know when that's up and running, so you guys can all participate, and I encourage you to do so. That is all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Patel, for that report. Councilwoman Hablets, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have first some library updates. The library is having a teen advisory board meeting Wednesday, February first, at six PM. It's open to teens from sixth grade to twelfth grade, and the library is looking for the teens to bring new ideas of programming that they would like to see at the library. So if you have a teenager at home, please tell them if they go down to the library and participate, it would be great. To all of the writers out there, there's a writer's cafe on Wednesday, the twenty-first of February at seven PM. No registration is required, and all levels of writers are welcome. And if you're looking to learn a new language for your New Year's resolution, the library now has access to the Pronuncicator website. If you have a library card, you can sign up and learn. If you have a library card, you can sign up and, uh, learn any of, it's a hundred and sixty-three languages. Um, so that's great if you want to learn a new language via a website. Uh, the Friends of the Library will have their general meeting tomorrow night, uh, January twenty-fourth at seven PM. Um, come to the meeting, learn more about the group and get involved. Uh, the Friends of the Library is, um, a fundraising group that helps to, uh, provide funds for extras that the library may need. And they're definitely looking for members, uh, they're kind of restarting after years of being in hiatus, so they're kind of restarting and looking for members. Um, as the mayor mentioned about the farmer's market, uh, we're starting our fourth season of the farmer's market this year. Uh, the market will run from May twenty-first until October twenty-ninth. Uh, we're currently taking applications, uh, for artists and vendors, and you can email L F Farmers Market at L F N J dot com, uh, for more info if you would like to be a vendor. Um, lastly, the Open Space Committee, um, I am the liaison for the Open Space Committee. Uh, we will be having, um, a meeting in February to discuss, uh, some grant applications um, and also future plans for, uh, parks and open space monies. Um, we have received open space monies, um, prior, and some of that open space money will be going to the, um, re, the revamping of, uh, Wilmore Park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Havilts. Councilmember, uh, Ben Cherry, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Council President. First, just want to say, Mayor, thank you for providing the state of the township update. Always, uh, great to hear all the different accomplishments that this, um, administration has pulled forth, so looking forward to another successful year in two thousand twenty-three. Um, just a few updates from me, uh, just from a Transportation Committee standpoint. I had a chance to meet with our committee recently to sort of map out the year and some of the projects that we're going to be working on, and also connected with, uh, Chief Pearl, because typically with these meetings, we always want to have a representation from the Little Falls Police Department there as well, so looking forward to working with the team this year. And, you know, as the mayor alluded to, and I know, uh, the chief will discuss this, you know, the, um, Little Falls Police Department is accessible if there's questions or concerns. Um, they're always willing and able to, you know, speak with the residents, look into a matter and come up with a resolution to it, so always appreciate the support there. Um, the other thing I did want to mention too is, um, this past Saturday, myself and Councilwoman Havilts, you know, we attended the Passaic Valley High School Band Association's, um, annual beefsteak and tricky tray, and just want to say, you know, thank you for, uh, the marching band and our leadership of, uh, Michael DeLucia for inviting us and just, you know, knowing that this, uh, group of, uh, young high school students from the three towns has done an amazing job, and they've really, you know, grown over the last couple of years. And if you don't know too, they start as early as seventh grade, so, you know, they, they recruit a lot younger, so just we're happy to be a part of that and just, you know, wish them the best. And then lastly, for residents to keep an out, um, we'll keep an eye on this, uh, tomorrow, sorry. Uh, the Little Falls Rec Department is going to send out the flyer indicating the spring sports signups. So, and this is not just for kids, it's also for adults, because you have the men's softball leagues, but for the kids, there's softball, baseball, tennis, track and field, um, you know, coming up this year, so look forward to the registration. As the mayor alluded to, we had some great numbers last spring, and we're looking to, uh, top those this year as well. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Verchery. Councilman Murphy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, and, uh, thank you, Mayor, for the state of the township. Uh, just real quick, um, we went ahead and scheduled our first meeting for Domestic Violence Prevention Committee this year, um, on Tuesday, February seventh at seven PM. Uh, this is a committee we're really looking to expand our membership with and, uh, grow the committee a little bit more. So if anybody is interested in learning about the committee or wants to attend the first meeting, please feel free to reach out to my email. Um, if you have any questions about it, you just want to see what it's about, come to the meeting, please feel free to email me, and we'll, we'll get that taken care of. Um, other than that, I look forward to seeing you on the seventh, and that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you for that report. So, February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Valentine's Day, the senior advisors are going to have dessert and dancing. Uh, we'll have the DJ, we'll have desserts from ShopRite. I'm really happy that we booked a new act per se, uh, just this afternoon. Uh, Ms. Spear, who does the Zumba classes at the scene at the Direct Center, is going to be coming in and doing Zumba dancing with her classmates, uh, at the dessert and dancing, so we're really looking forward to that. Uh, so thank you, uh, Ms. Spear, for, uh, volunteering and wanting to do that. Those who want to attend that, please, uh, email me or call. The number's on the flyer, the number's nine seven three two five six zero two four nine. Uh, if there's no answer, just leave your number and name, and we'll put you on the list. This is a free event, uh, but those out of the town seniors do have to pay five dollars. Those, uh, anyone wishing to join the senior advisory, please contact me, we are looking for new members. Uh, and the next, uh, event after that will be St. Patty's Day, March seventeenth. For those council members and the mayor, if you're available, on the fourteenth, please stop by and help out handing out the desserts to the seniors. Mayor, thank you for the state, uh, address for, about the town. As listed, there were many, 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 many accomplishments, uh, but the EMT accomplishment is very important uh, as the town grows, that everyone knows that if they're in need, that an ambulance will be there within minutes to rest assured and keep their nerves at, at peace, that, um, things will be okay. Councilor Wenzel, anything for this governing bodies this evening? Have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Havilts, second by Councilman Ben Cherry, all those in favor of opening to the public, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay, the motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide, to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will queue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus, the floor is now open. Uh, when you're approaching the podium, you just need to state your name, you do not need to state your address.
Okay, my name is, uh, Jim, Jim Bono. I own, uh, Bono's Prime Meats and Deli at four seventy Main Street in Little Falls. Uh, I've been in business there since, uh, nineteen ninety-five. To say I came to Little Falls not knowing anyone in the town and welcomed me with open arms and, uh, listen, I've, I've had a great run and I hope it continues. I want to thank the, the, the council and, and the chief, uh, for, uh, you know, addressing this problem I was having with the parking, uh, you know, on Arlington. And, uh, the way he, uh, explained it to me, uh, it, it seems it'll be, it'll be fine, you know, and, uh, uh, you know, you know, I've never had a problem with the parking there, uh, for almost thirty years I've been here, but people seem to park their cars there and leave them, you know, and, you know, for days at a time, and it was getting to be a little bit of a problem and, uh, but, uh, it's gotten better, and, and I think with the, uh, the two spots, uh, that you're going to mark off, I think that's going to take care of the problem, the two thirty-minute parking. So, I, I appreciate, uh, uh, what, what you did for me, I, I really do, and, uh, thanks, thanks.
Sir, uh, can you please be more specific to the street and the parking issue that you're having?
Well, he- here's the thing, I, I have, I have a tenant upstairs. I have four parking places in, in my parking lot, right? But I give, I give them one of the parking places, because I feel that it's up to a landlord to give their tenants a place to park, even though it's taking one parking place away from my business. My neighbor, on the other hand, he has three garages and a huge driveway. He refuses to give his tenants a place to park, so they park across the street from my store, and at times they, they leave their vehicles there. And then, and, you know, I don't, I don't think that's fair. He has, he has plenty of parking, you know, and, you know, he, he just, I, I've talked to the tenants, and they've asked him, and he says, no, park on the street. You know, he, and, uh, you know, and, uh, it's, it's, it's really, especially during the holidays, it's been, it's been a bit of, of a problem, because, and then, and then the, uh, the Japanese restaurant, the employees there, they would come and park their car, you know, they got a big parking lot there, they would come and park their SUVs there all day. And, you know, it was a real detriment to my, to my business, you know, and, uh, you know, I don't complain, I never complained about anything, you know, I, like I said, I, I, I love Little Falls, you know, I love being here, and, 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 I, you know, I have a very successful business, people, people in this town are great, uh, you know, I love everybody, my customers are great. You know, and, and that's, that's basically, uh, what the problem is, but, uh, you know, the two, the two thirty-minute parking places, uh, should, should solve the problem, you know, and, and, uh, that's basically it. The other, the other concern I have about Arlington is the way people come flying around the corner. Some of my customers almost got run over, I ca- I can't tell you how many times. You know, I don't know if you consider this, but putting speed bumps on the road, I know I asked one other time, and I said, you know, the snowplows hit the speed bumps and this and that, but I think, uh, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and people get out of their cars and start walking across the street to the store, and people come flying around Main Street, and they, and, you know, I have some elderly people, they almost get run over. So, I, you know, I would, I would think about that too, that's a big concern of mine. But, uh, other than that, that's, uh, that's about it, and, uh, thank, thank you for hearing me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions regarding what was introduced tonight by the speaker? Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks a lot.
Hi, Peggy Olivi. Um, the Little Falls Historical Society has had a P O box at the post office on Main Street for, for many years, so I'm often there. Over time, I have seen this lovely building start to decline. The grounds are unkempt, the windows need cleaning, and the entrance metal walkway are, are corroding. Knowing the post office is a federal building and not the responsibility of Little Falls, last Thursday morning, I wrote to Mayor Damiano and asked, is there anything we can do? An hour and a half later, Mayor Damiano responded, saying he would reach out to the postmaster and if need be, our Congresswoman. The next day, Friday morning, twenty-four hours later, I received an email from Mayor Damiano, quote, "I spoke with the postmaster, and she is having it taken care of right away." So I just want to say, government may move slowly in other towns, but not in Little Falls. Thank you, Mayor Damiano.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council chambers who'd like to come forth?
Jim Doran.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm very interested in seeing how, um, in Little Falls, uh, our officials are able to work with one another, uh, in ways that uh, many people say is not happening at the national level. Uh, this is a very neighborly, neighborly town. That's not my teeth, I had a, have a lozenge, uh, and, uh, in the last, oh, seven to ten years, I've seen it become very considerably more neighborly events that people can meet with one another. And, uh, in casual, uh, the, uh, farmer's market is really, uh, something that, uh, adds a great deal to the quality of life in, in my estimation. I would like to ask if the town, from time to time, can, uh, speak with federal officials, uh, the Passaic River uh, in back of Riverview Circle. Most of it is about twelve inches deep, if that. Um, I've seen people walk, uh, from the riverbank to Fern Island Park, which is maybe two hundred feet away, um, never getting in higher than, than, than normal boots. Um, that's not a river. That river should, I think, have some sort of treatment. I don't know if, I know they're doing, they were doing dredging downstream. And if we, when we do meet with federal officials, um, I'm asking that you raise the question, uh, are there technologies now that would make it possible to, um, create a, a full channel uh, for the, uh, for the river in that, in that area, and maybe, uh, maybe further upstream? Uh, I, I think it would have at least some amelioration of flooding. Uh, flooding. I swallowed the cough drop. Okay, uh, in, uh, Superstorm Sandy, uh, I personally saw from my back window that small measures, or seemingly small measures, can have significant effects. The, uh, then-Governor Christie had the dams upstream opened for three or four days before the storm hit. Uh, the river rose visibly two feet, dropped, and when the storm hit, the river was low enough that it didn't come up that a- as much as it would have into the groundwater and up through some pumps, which in that particular storm were inoperative for a week. So I'm suggesting that if there is, uh, anything can be done to, uh, cr- create more space, uh, in the river, you, you know, uh, around, in Passaic River, uh, around here, it would be a good thing, and I, I raised the issue, I know there are problems with the dredging, several problems. Maybe at some point, the technology will, um, there will, technol- technological solutions will be, uh, advanced, and I'd like to thank all of you for your service, uh, this is, uh, an unusually uh, civic town. And, uh, I hope that maybe you'll invite officials from, uh, higher levels of government to, to, uh, observe how, how it actually can be done for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Does the council have any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Mayor, uh, how can we? Okay, well, fine. Mayor, uh, how can we move forward on, uh, exploring that possibility?
I can reach out and determine if any of those types of measures in the Passaic River are even permissible. I'm uncertain if they are, I know there were periods of time where things such as that were not permitted. I can find out if anything like that has changed since, um, and see if, you know, things have changed. I, I don't know where that currently stands. I do know that any major infrastructure-like funding for the Passaic River is on a hold down in DC and needs to be unfrozen through the, I believe it's the Watershed Act or something like that, down through the, uh, through, through them down in DC, if it's ever going to be funded. I don't know if that means smaller types of, uh, day-to-day operations and funding can be spent on the, on the river, uh, in, in alleviating flooding type issues, uh, but I do know that major types of improvements to alleviate flooding along the Passaic River is frozen down in, uh, in Washington DC. Uh, so I don't know if that would have, would have an impact on any of this as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kuscha, do we have someone that would like to speak? Mr. Quadi, can you hear us?
I can.
The floor is yours, sir. Your name, please.
Thank you, yes, Al Quadi, uh, Morning Side Circle. Uh, I just wanted to address what Mr. Doran raised, um, a moment ago about the, the dam, um, upstream on the Passaic River. So while I was on the council, I actually met with Mayor Sarah of Pomp and Lakes, um, and he showed me the dam. Um, Governor Christie did not order the dam lowered for flooding. What they did under the Christie administration was that they computerized the opening and closing of the dam upstream, which used to be done by an employee, um, of, uh, uh, of, I guess, a state agency who literally would look at the, 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 the dam and decide how high the water should be and visually open and close it at his or her will. They changed that under the Christie administration and computerized it, and since then, we have not had any flooding, um, because the, the technology in place technology in place determines what's going to happen downstream according to waters that are coming from upstream and regulates the water itself. So to Mr. Doran's point, um, that he's hoping that things like that don't happen again. Rest assured, there's no governor that needs to make sure that the dam is lowered in time so that Little Falls doesn't get flood. The, the measures are already in place through technology to, to alleviate, hopefully alleviate that problem going forward permanently. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you for that information this evening. Mr. Kusha.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak? See no else I would like to speak in the chat and see no else I would like to speak in this, in the council chambers? Can I have a motion to close the public comment?
Some moved.
Moved by Council. Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havelitz. For all those in favor of closing the public comment, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, do so by saying nay, the motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilman Murphy. Mrs. Kraus, this is a roll call for the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havelitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes, at this time, Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance fourteen forty-eight.
Introduction of ordinance number fourteen forty-eight, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to amend chapter seven on street regulations of the code of the Township of Little Falls with the second reading and public hearing scheduled for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three."
Thank you. Have a motion to deduce ordinance, do I ask that, ready?
No.
No, have a motion to deduce ordinance fourteen forty-eight.
Some move.
By Councilman Vanchery, second by Councilwoman Havelitz. All those, uh, Mr. Kraus called the roll to introduce fourteen forty-eight.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havelitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Okay, now we can have discussion. Let's talk about fourteen forty-eight, Chief.
Yes, sir.
How did this come before us?
Uh, since I took over, I guess, uh, one of the mandates has been to our traffic unit to, to go out and deal with resident or in this case, uh, business owner complaints. Um, the specific complaint was regarding, uh, just like Jimmy said, about parking near his business. Uh, we, we did a traffic study, not only addressing the issue that he, he was dealing with, but looking at Arlington and Mueller as a whole. Uh, because anybody that's driven through there, some people park a little too close to the intersections. It makes turning from Mueller onto Arlington a little dangerous, people making a right and then people coming the other way. So our traffic unit went out, they made recommendations, they took measurements. Uh, and I guess the ordinance is a representation of what our recommendations were. One, dealing with Jimmy's specific issue in regards to customer parking near his business, but also trying to make the intersection, uh, and right of ways as safe as possible for the motoring public.
Thank you. I see in the ordinance, it's thirty-minute timeframe?
Yes, sir.
Seems, in my opinion, the council like to weigh in here. There seems to be, that's a short window period of time. Uh, thirty minutes. I think, uh, Councilman Vanchery, what, what do we do in our business zones?
So it's usually two hours that you have parking, but I think in this situation, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, because with, um, you know, Bono's business, it's in and out basically, whereas, you know, in the center of town, it could be example of, you know, Councilwoman Havelitz wants to get her hair done, then she wants to stop by the Falls Kitchen. She needs a few hours, you know, it takes an hour for hair, an hour to get some food, um, afterwards as well. But knowing that the opportunity for thirty minutes after speaking with Lieutenant Macaluso and, um, Chief Pearl and knowing the business and the nature of the customers that come in and out, it, it seems like it is doable for sure.
So Chief, you don't have an issue with the thirty minutes?
No, sir. And given the specific, uh, complaint, I guess, and, and the nature of his business, shorter parking would be more ideal because he's a predominantly carryout business.
Council, have any questions or comments? I guess I'll just kind of continue here then. Uh, about how many parking spaces this ordinance would allow on, on Arlington, Chief? What?
There'd be two timed parking spaces by the distances.
Okay. And I see it extends also into Mueller Place, correct? We come back around into Mueller Place as well, twenty-two feet.
So the, the Mueller Place is just a no parking here to corner, which is, um, they're not supposed to park near that intersection there anyway. Uh, there is a, a missing stop sign or, uh, something that we would have the DPW, uh, replace. But because that, because Arlington leads into private property, sometimes people get a little bit confused if they can park or not park uh, on the side that's closest to the kitchen and bath parking lot. So the ordinance would really just clean up that entire intersection. Uh, Mueller would be no parking here to corner leading into Arlington. No parking fifty feet of the stop sign on, uh, Arlington, closest to kitchen and bath. No parking between two signs, that would be where the proverbial block the box area would be. We wouldn't allow parking there in the T-intersection. And the timed parking would only be, uh, between, there's a no parking here to corner sign, the corner of Arlington and Main Street. There's two spots that we would be putting there, and I can give you a copy of this, Council President, um, the picture. The, uh, two timed parkings and they'd be closest to the, the, uh, businesses side entryway.
And this is seven days a week, is that correct?
Correct.
No questions from the councils or comment?
How many spots are on, on Arlington, um, right now?
How many, how many cars can we fit?
Yeah.
Uh, it's fifty-six plus two oh two. Uh, maybe fifteen, twenty, twenty spots. It, but again, people park where they're not supposed to park.
Okay.
Um, specifically where Mueller ties to Arlington, nobody should park in the intersection, but people do park over there. So it'd be about between fifteen and twenty, uh, vehicle parking over there.
Okay. And we don't see it on the weekends, any issues with the thirty minutes if somebody's visiting in front of the house or anything like that?
Um, it would just be the two spots closest to his business that would be affected by.
Okay.
So if they didn't park there, there would be plenty. During the weekend, there's not really a parking issue over there because all the businesses aren't, aren't open. We have a lot of people that, that work on Mueller and their employees will park on Arlington and Mueller. So during the weekends, you won't see the increased traffic, uh, or parking issue because the businesses are closed.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Well, can't we make?
Do the floor.
Sorry.
That's a Councilman Patel, the floor is yours.
For the thirty-minute parkings, can't it just be for business hours, right? Because that's the issue that we're trying to address. So what time does the business close on the weekends?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's, we, do. Yeah.
That's, that's chief.
That's the chief. Chief, do you know that answer?
I don't know what his business hours are.
Yeah. Councilwoman, we, uh, can't ask the public to, uh.
No, yeah, sorry.
At this point.
Was trying to, I think, be able to address.
Yes.
Chief, right. Um, let me just also add in, because I had some, uh, bobbing sense of writing it up, but really, uh, the police department, this, this was generated through the police department, through the chief's traffic division. Some of the things that the chief is explaining here, I just want to make clear. Some of these things are already, uh, obligations of a vehicle parking on the street under regular title thirty-nine jurisdiction, like the infamous fifty feet from a stop sign. Or certain distance, I think it's also fifty feet, chief.
Fifty feet or something.
From, uh, not only from the stop sign, but also in the intersection. You know, we often see these, um, in, uh, T-intersections where somebody believes they can park on the opposite side or that what I'll say is the, where there's no roadside parking. That's not an allowed parking area. So what this does to some degree is address and clarify those pieces. Um, I know the council president and, uh, council have issued, have raised some concerns about the timing, which is well within your jurisdiction to determine. But I just want to make clear that several of these pieces that are part of this ordinance are already obligations of motorists in the saving juris. But it's up to you in terms of the timing, which is what the council president and councilor just brought up. Uh, that, that is certainly within your purview in terms of timing and, and when that comes in.
Other questions, Councilwoman Patel? Mayor, you would like to weigh in?
Council President, if I may, the website indicates, or Google indicates, the hours of operation are eight to four, Monday through Saturday, and eight to one thirty. On Sundays, they're closed on Wednesdays. If that, is this the council?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You know, we'll move on. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for general matters.
Some move.
Moved by Councilmember Vanchery, second by Councilwoman Havelitz. All those in favor of opening a meeting to general matters, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, please do so by saying no, nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, it may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually, um, by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Counselor Wenzel, can you explain, uh, to Mr. Bono how this works now going forth?
Okay, so, um, what has to happen with ordinances is that there's two meetings. So this meeting is when the ordinance is introduced. This is in the format it is, as we've been discussing tonight. Then it will be, uh, on for a second reading, second hearing on February twenty-seventh. And, uh, on February twenty-seventh would be the date when the ordinance is enacted. There is a requirement for publication in between. Uh, but if there's any, uh, changes between now and then, those changes would have to be, uh, announced uh, between now and then, but on February twenty-seventh is the next date when the ordinance would be up for what's called adoption. So, but you can come to meetings between now and February twenty-seventh, I think.
The floor is now open. Mr. Kusha, anyone in the chat? Anyone in the council chambers like to come forward? Have a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havelitz. All those in favor of closing to the public, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, please do so by saying nay. Okay, have a motion to go into executive, uh, session for discussion for pending litigation. Action will be taken.
Some move.
Moved by Councilmember Murphy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor of going into executive session, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, please do so by saying nay. I'd like to thank the public and those who attended. I don't know how long will be an executive, uh, session, but you're welcome to stay.
So. So there's, where are you going to put this?
Mrs. Kraus, uh, please note the minutes of what time we resume, uh, resume this meeting from executive session. Have a motion to approve resolution E. Some move. Moved by Councilman Vanchery.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havelitz. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for resolution E.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havelitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes, at this time, have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Murphy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, nay. This meeting is now closed.